I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Mr. Administrator, when you are prepared, please proceed.
Please pray with me. This is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. Father, we're grateful for your presence here. We ask that you be with us as we conduct a meeting relative to the citizens and the business of Clay County. We ask for deliberation. We ask for tolerance. We ask for patience and good judgment. We ask all this in Jesus' blessed name. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Daulte.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion relating to approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion is made for the approval of the agenda as published. Are there any additions, deletion, or any other alterations to the agenda as published?
Thank you, Commissioner. I would like to amend the agenda and add on to the regular agenda Resolution 2021-104. So this resolution deals with giving the rest of the CARES Act funds that are currently in possession of the county to the Operation Safe Vaccination effort. We, as a commission, dealt with this issue before, and the intent of the commission certainly was to have distributed those funds prior to this date. But I think this is a housekeeping measure, from what I understand from speaking with our administrator and counselor, to make sure that we actually get those funds out the door as quickly as possible.
And if it's acceptable as far as your amendment goes, we will put that item as the first item under our regular agenda.
Thank you.
Very well. Motion's been made to-
And Commissioner, may I add to that?
Oh, yes, please.
It's also my understanding that this kind of arose in the last 24 hours and that it was not known that these were not expended, and that there is some urgency, given the nature of the work they're doing at Operation Safe, to make sure that they're fully funded to get through their really important work. And so I think for those reasons, it would be appropriate to put on.
Thank you very much for that, because you are correct, of course, that the justification for the immediate action needed to be stated. So thank you for that. So a motion has been made. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Thompson, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't think-
Is there any comment from anyone in the audience? Seeing none, Commissioner Carpenter, you're free to close.
Thank you. I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
The amendment has been passed. That brings us to the underlying motion, approval of the agenda, which is now approval of the agenda as amended. Further discussion? Are there any other alterations or any other discussion related to our agenda for this evening's meeting? Seeing none, Commissioner Thompson, I believe that was your motion, if you would like to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us, are there any other, okay, that brings us to meeting schedule. Mistress Administrator?
Commissioners, the next meeting scheduled for the County Commission is a commission work session scheduled for next Thursday, April 22, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you very much. That brings us to honorary resolutions. We have one listed under that. Mr. Administrator, if you would please proceed on that point.
Commissioners, the Clay County Commission would like to designate April as Autism Awareness Month in Clay County.
Thank you very much. This is a resolution, being an honorary resolution does not require the same notification as another action would require. This would obviously recognize April as Autism Month, and I think that's something that we need to make sure that we are able to honor. A lot of us know people or have people in our families who have this particular condition, so it's certainly something that I think we need to make sure that we are able to talk about and to bring forward. One of the first issues I dealt with in the legislature was, in fact, an issue related to disability, so it is something that I'm aware that is certainly quite an important issue. Commissioner Thompson, would you like to speak on the subject?
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, we are humbled to take part in Autism Awareness Month here in Clay County. We recognize the prevalence of autism has risen from 1 to 125 just in 2010, and now from 1 in 54 in 2020. Our shared goal is to further increase awareness and encourage inclusiveness. I want to thank everyone who took the time to be here today and to work hard to create a community that celebrates differences and to increase opportunities for individuals with autism.
Thank you. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, no, I'm eager to support the resolution this evening, and obviously, this is a big issue in the lives of a lot of our fellow Clay Countyans. And I am curious, is this, will this match the month that the state currently has for autism awareness? I assume the answer is yes, but I wasn't sure if-
Yeah, yes, it is.
It is April as well.
And it's also the case, and will be expanded upon, Councilmember Hall is here, and it is also an action taken by the City of Kansas City as well.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you so much.
That being said, let's, we do have some individuals here who would like to expand on this subject. We'll start with our, the chairman of our Disabilities Board, Steve Wright. Would you come forward and-
Where do you want him to get to? Right here?
Probably up there.
Right over there? Okay, great.
As he's making his way to the podium, I would like to let everyone know who's going to be speaking. Please make sure that the light-
I have some material. Is it all right if I pass that out to you?
Sure, here, I'll do it.
Please do.
There's a brochure from the DDRB, what it's all about, maybe some of the new board members.
Okay, sure.
This is the agencies we support. These are the members of the board.
I'm changing my mind.
Yeah. And this is our agenda, in case one of the commissioners want to come to one of our meetings. And this is the funding that we fund in Clay County.
Very good.
Changed by agency.
I would like to mention to anyone who does come up to speak, to address the commission, to make sure that the light is green at the base of the microphone, to please identify yourself for the benefit of the audio recording certainly, and to speak loudly and clearly, obviously with the masks, that creates something of a challenge, but I think that will at least get us where we need to go. So please proceed.
First off, thank you, presiding Commissioner Jure. Thank you, Eastern Commissioner Megan, and thank you, Western Commissioner John. I haven't got to meet all of you. I met Megan before, when she was the clerk here. We appreciate your supporting autism this month, and we, I'm presently the chairman for the DDRB, and have served on the board for many, many years, and have an aunt who's developed me disabled, and I'm conservator and guardian for her in Clay County. I also brought with me Casey Meloncon of Easter Seals, who's attending this meeting with me today. They have a large program for autism in Clay County that supports parents and children and some adults with autism through their program. And Clay County supports autism many other ways besides Easter Seals, vocational services. We have three workshops that over 35 people with autism work in the workshops in Clay County through VSI. And other agencies provide housing and even child therapy at Northland Early Education Center, which is over near Leslie. But I'd like to do just a little bit of housekeeping, since I got a forum with you guys right now. We have nine members on our board. Right now, there's five that have not been reapproved by the commissioners. Myself was supposed to be reapproved, if you so see to do that, in January of 2020. So I've been serving on the board all this last year and through half of this year almost now, without being reappointed by the board, the commissioners. There's a piece of paper that I sent out to you. The ones that are in yellow are the ones that will need action for reappointment, and then we have one vacancy that we're looking for someone to come on the board. And the key part of this is that there's nine members on the board, and the learning curve for the DDRB is really large. You have to understand federal, state, county funding. You have to understand the agencies that we have in the county and what they do and where they are in providing services for people with disabilities. And so it's critical that we have, we have three-year terms, and three people go off each year, and we would appreciate if the commissioners would then either reappoint them and/or appoint whoever the commission feels warranted for that particular board.
By the way, thank you very much for that information. Before you continue with the other, just to kind of clear that point up, yes, and I look forward to consulting with you on the vacancy and on the other issues on that.
Absolutely.
Certainly feel free to reach out to the associate commissioners. I will be consulting with you on that, and then per our constitution, I will consult with our administrator prior to making any kind of nominations, and also, obviously, with the consent of the rest of the commission. And we do look forward to making sure that we get not just this, but all the boards and commissions back on the regular track of rotations, so that we always have a number of people who are familiar and ready to address the issue.
That's very appreciated. Very appreciated.
Please proceed.
We have 12 agencies in Clay County that we support, and Easter Seals is one of them. And you have the funding for each agency in front of you. We have subcommittees within our board that go over finance, programs. We have a service committee that goes in with a lot of the services and reviews them. All the agencies have to send in audit reports to us on an annual basis. So I just want to give you a little bit of background of what this board really, really accomplishes. And our goal as a board is to be great stewards for the money that supported this program through SB 40 money, that created this fund for the development of disabled people in Clay County. And our second thing, first thing, actually, is to provide services for people with disabilities. I'm Christian, and I believe that to the least of them, we should give to them. And I'm not saying that the people with disabilities are the least of them. They all have specific characters and pieces in them that God created and put into them that are beautiful. And the agencies that we have, that we work with, all recognize that, and they work hard to bring special training, transportation, housing, vocational services. And this year, with Easter Seals, we've opened up a new program. It was a pilot program, and Casey's going to speak about that. And I'd like to invite all of you to any of our meetings. Right now, we're doing them on Zoom. We do them on the last Tuesday. You have a schedule in front of you when our meetings are, and we appreciate it. I think the only, I could tell you, I've been on the board almost probably, maybe 20 years, longer, maybe less, plus or minus. And Jerry and Luann Ridgeway were the only ones that have ever come to see our board. And so I would encourage the new members of the commission to understand what we do. We get $5 million in tax revenue to provide for services, and I think it's an important thing. So I hope that you can see that. Now I'd like Casey to come up and talk about what we're doing in autism through Easter Seals. I'll hand, I'll head it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Can you handle that? Hi, everyone. I am Casey Meloncon. I'm the director of our Autism and Therapy Program at Easter Seals Midwest for the Kansas City region. Thank you for allowing me to come speak with you guys today. It is Autism Awareness Month, as we've been talking about, so it's a big, big month for the individuals that we support, as well as their families. As we heard earlier, the prevalence rate for autism spectrum disorder is 1 in 54, as reported by the CDC. So that means there are a lot of individuals in this county, in Clay County alone, that have an autism spectrum disorder diagnosis. We were able to start our Autism Services Division in the Kansas City metro area as of July of 2015. So since that time alone, my team has worked with 170 individuals and their families to provide the services. And to be quite honest, without the help of the Clay DDRB, we might not have been able to reach that many people. There's a long waiting list within the state of Missouri for funding, and they have offered to come in and make an agreement with us to pay for those services for individuals that are waiting, where there's no end in sight for that funding. So it's been a really great partnership with them in order to serve more individuals within Clay County. We also have an Employment Services Division, too, that serves young adults and older adults as well, and they have served roughly 75 individuals in Clay County this year alone. So just to kind of note, too, we don't only provide services within Clay County. We have four other counties that we provide services in, and we've reached many more individuals, but solely focusing on Clay County here. So some of those services that we do offer are our parent training program, and this program allows us to go in the home setting. And so you're working with individuals within their natural environment. You're going to get more accomplished that way. Kiddos are going to act amazingly great in a clinic setting, and then when we go to the natural environment of their home, it definitely can present other challenges. So with the parent training program, our goal is to equip all those parents with the tools and strategies that work for individuals on the autism spectrum, because your traditional parenting techniques do not typically work for those individuals. It's all based off of ABA or Applied Behavior Analysis, so it is considered an evidence-based program as well. We work directly with the individual that has autism, as well as the parents, and all of the goals are very individualized, because once you've met one person with autism, you've literally only met that one person. They don't all present the same way. So great success with that program. We've been doing that one again since July 2015 with our very first individual that we served here in Clay County, too, through DDRB funding. We also have an ABA or Applied Behavior Analysis Clinic that's onsite, which Steve just referenced. That is a program that we just started getting up and going as of January 1st this year. So again, with their partnership, we wouldn't have been able to do that without it. With that being said, we do currently serve, we're about at 50% capacity at our ABA clinic, and with that is very, very individualized as well. We run eight to three in Pleasant Valley, so right down the street, and we have individuals that come in, again, very individualized serviced. We have registered behavior technicians that are certified that work with them, that are overseen by a behavior analyst. So you can address all kinds of different goals with them, whether it's behavioral goals, communication, social skills, language, things like that. We're seeing great success with that program, and it's really, really fun. Every day at the office is different, so they keep us on our toes. We also have therapy services as well, where we identify individuals that may have all kinds of developmental disabilities, but we do occupational therapy as well as physical therapy with those individuals. And then we do some social skills groups, as well as sibling support groups, too. So our social skills groups are based, are an evidence-based model as well, and so those are really kind of fun to do. We focus on teens and young adults with that one. And then we also recently started with, again, the support of Clay DDRB, to roll out sibling support groups. And I can't tell you how important those are. I actually have a sibling that has autism, and she's three years older than I am. And if I would have had the opportunity to do those sibling support groups when I was younger, it would have been so beneficial. Back then, it didn't exist, though. So it's really, really fun to work with the siblings. They don't always get a lot of that one-on-one attention like the individual with autism does. And so we can work through a lot of things that they're experiencing, as well as normalize those feelings, too. So a lot of great work is being done. There's still a lot of work to do, though, because, like I said, we've reached 170 individuals, but there are many, many more in Clay County, and so we hope to be able to continue to reach more.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we go to the county administrator, I want to also recognize that we have Councilwoman Heather Hall here, because Kansas City has taken some other actions. So if you could come up and present those, then we'll go to the administrator and then open it up for anyone else who has comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, county administrator, county counselor, people. Thank you for letting me be here tonight to speak on something that's near and dear to my heart. My name is Heather Hall. I'm a Clay County resident, and I also serve on the city council in Kansas City. Every year, I write a resolution honoring the work of so many people, much like the folks who have just spoken, to do things to make life better for those living with autism here in Clay County in Kansas City. In Missouri, we have 600,000 people living with a developmental disability. That's the first, most minority population in our state. It's a big deal, and we need to really be paying attention to it. And so when we talk about things we can do, this is just a piece of paper. What we're talking about today, what we did and did last week at city council was just a piece of paper. But if we don't continue to do what these people are doing, then it doesn't matter that we're meeting tonight. So thank you for taking this step. Thank you for telling us what you're doing. There are so many great organizations that are doing it. Autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the world and encompasses a wide range, like she was saying, mild to severe attributes of autism. And so we have to be very careful about how we do that. So in Kansas City, we've done a lot of things. We've really worked hard to make autism foremost in our awareness, so that we're making Kansas City an inclusive city. We have now made an inclusive play area at the zoo, and the only reason I'm telling you that, because it's not in Clay County, but Clay County taxpayers are paying for so much of the zoo. I want you to know that when you go to the zoo, the Royals have donated wheelchair-friendly, accessible golf carts. So when you, Clay County families, take your children to the zoo, and everybody knows, if you've had kids, that you never make it to Africa, because by the time you get to Africa, your normal functioning kids are exhausted. And if you have a sibling with autism, then your other kids never get there, because you just have to say, "Sorry, we're done for the day." Well, now, through the support of the city, the tax dollars provided by Clay County residents, and Variety KC, we did a complete adaptive play area. So if you are an adult with a wheelchair and you want to take your able-bodied children to Africa at the zoo, you now have a place you can go play with them on it. If you are a child that's in an adaptive wheelchair, walker, whatever, you can now play in that play area when you get to Africa, just like every other kid. But also, we have noise-canceling headphones and weighted blankets, because when you are on the autism spectrum, as you know, we just need a little minute sometimes, and that's all it takes to let them then go along and enjoy the rest of their day. So there's so many things we can do as Clay County residents and support them, and so that's what we're doing. A girlfriend of mine, who's the mayor of Battlefield, Missouri, wrote a book called How to Make Your City an Autism-Friendly City. And we are working hard on the Kansas City side to make our city autism-friendly. I would implore you all to make our county an autism-friendly county. So when I bring my child with special needs, if I have one, and they come to a restaurant and they just freak out, right? And then the restaurant's all discombobulated, and everyone doesn't know what they're doing. We need to teach and educate the restaurateurs and the employees, and maybe the other people who are dining, to say, "It's okay. We just need to give people a little bit more support," because children with special needs don't need special attention. They need special equipment, so that they can do what they need to do and live a life like we live. And so we want to make sure we're doing that. Another thing that I'm excited about, if you'll allow me to talk about the MoAble program real quick?
Uh huh.
Is that appropriate now? Okay. So I've been working with Treasure Fitzpatrick on the MoAble program. MoAble is a nationwide program in any state that wants to do it. It's just like a college savings plan, a 529 plan, but it's an ABLE program. So if you have children with special needs who probably will never go to college, but you want to save money for their future, and in Missouri, you know you can't, because they can't have more than $2,000 to their name, otherwise they lose all their benefits, social security, Medicaid, whatever, we need to have a vehicle to save money. So those parents, you know, unfortunately, the parents are going to die, and that child's going to be left to their own devices, or maybe a trust or an estate that's going to help manage their affairs, but we need to do something. So the ABLE program allows for parents to withdraw money from their paycheck. So I'm asking the county if you'd be interested in doing this. It's a benefit you offer your employees, doesn't cost the county anything, except for your HR person has to actually help fill out the paperwork with the employee, and then they just deduct money from their paycheck into an ABLE program, up to $15,000 a year for the benefit of that child. The only stipulation is the child has to be under 26 when they were diagnosed with their disability, and then you can put money in that up until it reaches $468,000. And that then can be used. It can be in an investment vehicle, it can be in a savings account, it can be in a little debit card, and then you can help give them some independence if they have that ability, depending on what their scale is of their disability. You can give them their debit card and go, "Here, I'm going to fill 100 bucks a month on it," or $50 a week on it, or whatever you want to do, and then let them have that autonomy to feel really good and empowered about themselves. Or maybe they don't ever get to do that, right? Maybe they're not able to do that. But the bottom line is, there's a tool then that they can be using, and it's for education, healthcare, transportation, rent, food, whatever they need for the benefit of them in their life. And what a, if you're a parent with special needs, you understand what I'm saying. It's all of a sudden, this liberating feeling just went over your shoulders, because now you've got something that you can give them for moving on when they are older. And so Kansas City, so there's about, oh, I'm not going to even tell you the right number, probably, but the treasurer has opened quite a few of these councils, some really large companies around the state. I think a hospital in Springfield started it, and they opened it. Kansas City, we launched it in March during our open enrollment, that you can do it anytime you want. And now we're the largest employer-based company in the state. We're the only, we're the only government agency in the state who said yes, we would do it. We have 4,000 employees, and now, we launched this last week. Treasure Fitzpatrick came to town, we did the thing, we launched it with our HR person, and I already have employees calling me saying, "Thank you. I didn't know I could do this," and they've already signed up. And so it's a win for everybody. It doesn't cost you money, you don't match it, nothing. But I would just say, whatever it takes for you all to do this as a benefit for your employees, they deserve this, and it's a really easy win for you, it's a win for them, and the most importantly, it's a win for their child, who's going to need the money later on in life, or today even. So I would love for you to do it. If you would like more information, I would be happy to share. The treasurer's office is happy to come and talk.
Actually, I think we'll go ahead and recognize, at this point, we'll recognize the administrator.
Okay. Yes, please. I'm done.
Well, the administrator has this to say. The councilwoman far more eloquently explained MoAble than I was going to attempt to do, and I simply would say, and that's perfectly fine. I'm glad you did. So my only comment is this, we in the county entirely endorse the program, and we have every intention to make every county employee aware that this program exists and urge their participation in it if they're eligible. So we're entirely on board with this, and we're going to make sure everybody knows about it, knows the benefits of it, and tries to take advantage of it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, we appreciate that, and the fact that you have, you know, you've consulted and kept the commission in the loop on that. So obviously, we certainly support your, you know, your announcement here today.
Well, thank you, county administrator, for doing that. I appreciate it. I overspoke, like I usually do when I'm passionate about something, so thank you.
Actually, no, everybody doesn't understand that I'm actually throwing my voice. It's pretty good. I'm fairly decent at this, and nobody could tell, right? Thank you, councilwoman.
Thank you for your time tonight.
What we'll do now is, I'd like to go to the commissioners for any comments that they have, and also any comments that anyone else from the public may have, and also if the commissioners have any questions of any of the people who have made comments, certainly feel free to do that at this time. Commissioner Carpenter, would you like to start?
Sure. No, I'll just thank each of the speakers who came this evening to share the work you're doing, and I speak, I think, for a lot of us who are very grateful for that work, and anything we can do to be helpful, and look forward to working with you more in the future.
It is, having so many people come forward is really great. Like I say, there's, one of the things that I discovered was there's very few people that you run into whose lives have not been touched in some degree by someone with autism. And certainly, the things that we're doing here are absolutely appropriate for moving this awareness forward on people's minds. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilwoman Heather Hall, I want to thank you. This is, thank you for coming up. You did do a terrific job, and we are really excited to be able to jump in this and offer this for our employees here in the county. I don't know, as a mother, I know this is something that's, words can't explain, you know, and you know what I mean. It's just, to be able to offer these services, and with our DDRB and then Easter Seals, it means a lot. And I know there's a lot of parents, and I know a lot of people in our community that benefit from your services, and I've seen it for the past six years myself, and I'm very grateful. So if there's ever anything you need from the commission, please let us know, and your work does not go unnoticed, and I would love to come back and see you guys in the meeting soon, so.
Is there anyone else here present who would like to make any comments? We will just take a brief moment, and we have a signed resolution that we will be passing on. Mr. Counselor, so this being an honorary resolution, do we need to vote on that, or do you think it's?
I sort of suggested a vote.
Very good. I kind of thought so, too. Is there a motion from the commission to vote on this resolution on Autism Awareness Month? Month?
I move that we adopt the resolution.
Motion's been made for the adoption of the honorary resolution declaring April Autism Awareness Month for Clay County. Discussion, we've had a good deal of discussion, and I think it's, I think we're very much the better for it. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any other comments?
I don't, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter, you are free to close.
Very good. I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Yes.
With that, we will break for just a moment, and we have a signed copy here that we could take a picture with a couple of the folks who are here, so we'll take a brief moment for that. And then, we will pick up our discussion under, our meeting under discussion items. That concludes honorary resolution. Thank you very much for everybody who came and gave testimony on this issue. We certainly appreciate their time and their hard work on such a worthy cause. That brings us to discussion items. We have one item under discussion. That item is an update on the Rental Assistance Program, and that would be the auditor, Mr. Hurlberg. If you could proceed.
Good evening, county commissioners. Victor Hurlberg, Clay County Auditor. I just wanted to give both an update and an, just kind of make you aware and get your, just essentially, understanding and approval.
Could you speak up just a little bit more? We're not quite picking up on your voice.
Sure. Can you hear me now? All right, very good. Okay, so, in 2021-68, that passed for the Rental Reers Program, the Consolidated Appropriations Act at the end of 2020, commission approved an initial allotment of 20% of the actual program dollars, that 90% bucket, if you recall. And so, of our five agencies, they got $131,000 each, if you remember that. I just wanted to give you an update that we have had since the program started on the 22nd of March. One agency has already spent all of that, and has already had approved applications to spend more, Carney Enrichment Council. And so, I just wanted to get your consensus to be able to release a second round to them specifically. I'm still waiting on the other four until they get closer. They are working on it for sure. Just to give some data, up to date, we are at $225,222 approved for payment, and we have had a total of 154 applications. Of the jurisdictions that were allowed to get this money directly from the state government having over $200,000, we were actually one of the smaller, you know, counties to be able to do that, so, and with the cities. But that's still a pretty good amount of our 3.6 million, 3.3 million for the 90%. And they're starting to really pick up pace and get, you know, so I think we're making good progress on that. Beyond that, I also want to just keep you apprised that the, and this is something we as a county should decide, the American Rescue Plan Act also included within that a 2.0 of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. We're estimated at around, instead of 3.6 million, it's more like 2.8 million. That, along with the overall American Rescue Plan, is forthcoming within the week or two. We're going to have directions as far as what I've seen and heard from U.S. Treasury Department. So, that's something to keep in mind of, of how we want to proceed forward with that. It's a longer timeline for the ERAP 2.0 to 2025. So, it's a more longer-term commitment. The latest guidance from the U.S. Treasury Department extended the original deadline for 1.0 from December 31st of this year to September 30th of 2022. So, there's that as well. But there is still a snapshot in September of this year by Treasury to make sure we have obligated 65% of our funds before they look at reallocating those dollars. So, I just wanted to give you essentially an update in that we have, I think I saw it up here earlier on the screen, I've put the reporting piece. We're working on it to get it fully what we need from our provider, Community Care Link. But I intend to put March monthly reports, and then, a running year-to-date total. So, what I have, why I told you today, a $220,000 number is year-to-date. It's tricky, the reporting technique right now, because it's pulled by the application date. So, what you're having, what we see is, it's going, if someone applied and they were in processing for March, those numbers are, you know, being updated continuously. So, the year-to-date picture is the most complete. So, I just wanted to update you on that, and the plan would be, just like we did with the first treasurer, make a wire to Carney Enrichment Council tomorrow, unless we have any concerns there. I will open up the questions.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate the work you and your team are doing to make sure that this gets administered the way it needs to go out there. And certainly, the idea is, it is not just assistance for the people who are renters, but also, many of the landlords who are, in fact, small businesses and are rather dependent on these funds coming in. They also have mortgages and other expenses. I've talked to a number of landlords as this program has unfolded, and so far, everyone has good things to say. So, we certainly appreciate the good work that's being done here as far as getting these funds out there into the proper hands, and making sure that they are being done in an accountable way. With that, I'll open it up to the other commissioners. Commissioner Thompson, do you have anything that you would like to ask or add?
Thank you, commissioner. I have no real questions at the moment. I really do appreciate you coming in and giving us an up-to-date. I was actually thinking about this the other day, wondering where we're at on this, and I was hoping a lot of people in our community were coming and taking advantage of this, because I think this is very important. And a lot of people have been, you know, struggling with the effects of COVID this past year and this year. I just appreciate you coming in, and I feel very comfortable letting the next round of money go through and getting some more help out there.
Commissioner Carpenter, would you like to ask a question or comment?
Thank you. No, I appreciate the update, and I've also heard from a number of folks positive reviews on the program so far, and I know it's helping a lot of people. You know, we talked before about making sure that we were keeping track of geographic and demographic distribution of these funds, making sure that we're doing this in a fair way across the county, different communities. Since we only have one entity that has expended all of its money so far, is there any downside to going ahead and doing the next tranche of money to all of these nonprofits, as opposed to just to the Carney entity? And are we keeping eyes on the geographic distribution and demographic distribution piece in terms of making sure that it's matching up with the numbers of the county?
Certainly, yes. Thanks, commissioner. To that question, I'd say, I'm open to, you know, feedback, certainly. I would just say that, looking at the overall numbers right now, the closest one to Carney Enrichment is at $50,000, so they still have $80,000 to go. I'm just, the original way we wrote up 2021-68 was to make sure everything is working right before we did it. So, that's my only, I guess, my only hesitation with that. And it's not too difficult to do. We, you know, look at the numbers and make that call. We're looking at this on a, you know, weekly, daily basis. As far as, you know, fair distribution, the act requires that we collect all, you know, obviously, address, and then, all demographic data. It does, and we have that. The current reporting has that. So, we have the demographics as far as, you know, race, and that's collected. It isn't captured in this report, just because it's, I just gave the total summary numbers. We didn't disclose individual information. But I can give you kind of percentages as far as that. Now, as far as geographic, we have the addresses, like I said. I have gone back to our provider. I would like to report to show a breakdown by zip code, by city. It's not currently there, so I have requested that, because that was my first question as well when I saw this, is I'd be interested to see that. But the overall process that we have set up with Community Care Link is essentially, applications come in from throughout Clay County, ex-communiti city, Kansas City, and they're distributed evenly across all five nonprofits, regardless of where that nonprofit is situated. So, as far as that, you know, where the need is, it's being met. They have the opportunity for walk-ins, paper applications, but I'm confident that that's being handled, and it's in their MOU for sure, too. So, I, when I get that reporting by geographic breakout, I will definitely bring that to you, but I don't have that currently. So, that's where we're at on that.
Okay. I appreciate that very much. It's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator, do you have anything that you'd like to add? Or was there any request from a consensus on the commission on this issue?
No, nothing to add, other than I think they're doing an outstanding job of oversight. The reporting, as the auditor said, is on a daily basis. I think it's clearly a beneficial program, and one that I think is getting a good deal of interest, and I'm very pleased and happy that the auditor's office is giving it the attention they are.
Thank you. Is there anyone present here who would like to comment or join the discussion? Seeing none, that closes down this discussion item. Public hearings, there are none listed. We have a number of issues on the consent agenda. I will be seeking a motion from the commission to accept the consent agenda. Just for way of information, if any commissioner would like to remove one of these items to the regular agenda for further consideration, they are certainly free to do so. Absent that, I would entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as printed.
Motion's been made for the passage of the items in the consent agenda discussion. Commissioner Carpenter?
I thought we had a pretty good discussion on each of these items last week, and I'm comfortable with keeping them all on the consent agenda and moving forward with it.
I believe you, I believe you are correct. I certainly agree with you on that. Are there any comments from anyone present here on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Commissioner Thompson, you're free to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That completes our consent agenda. That brings us to a regular agenda. The first item is the one that was added at the top of our meeting. That is 2021-104. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, excuse me, commissioners, the 2021-104, as very articulately explained and described by Commissioner Carpenter, and also, the reasoning behind that by our legal counsel, is to approve the disbursement of the remaining CARES Act funds to Operation Safe. Operation Safe is the organization jointly sponsored by North Kansas City Hospital, Liberty Hospital, and the Clay County Health Department, that takes place on the footprint of Cerner Corporation. It's a spectacular operation, a model of efficiency, and we, as you well remember, discussed the wisdom of doing this a couple of commission meetings ago, and this is simply to authorize and facilitate the disbursement of those funds. The amount that we're talking about is $106,259.46 to the penny. Approval of this will close that fund and empty it, and that's what you all are asked to deal with at this point in time. And I believe there are some individuals from Operation Safe here that perhaps might make some additional comments.
If they would like to step forward and make any comment on this, we certainly appreciate it. And we also would like any comments as far as updates on when those vaccinations are available to, and to who they are available. So, kind of an extra little publicity push on that to make sure everybody is as aware as possible of the opportunity.
Sure. First of all, on behalf of the Clay County Public Health Center Board of Trustees, oh, thank you, totally forgot, sorry. Gary Zabber, Act Director of Public Health, Clay County Public Health Center. First of all, on behalf of the Clay County Public Health Center Board of Trustees, I would like to thank presiding Commissioner Nolte, Commissioner Thompson, and Commissioner Carpenter for their support for Operation Safe. We appreciate that very much. Operation Safe is, as was mentioned, a collaborative that was formed between North Kansas City Hospital, Liberty Hospital, Cerner Corporation, and Clay County Public Health Center with the goal of putting as many vaccinations into arms as possible for COVID-19 response here in Clay County. And I will tell you, as I've said before, there is no way that the Clay County Public Health Center had the capacity to do the effort that was undertaken by this collaborative. So, I am just so appreciative and grateful to Cerner, to North Kansas City Hospital, and to Liberty Hospital for doing this collaborative. It's just another example in a rich history of collaboration across the Northland that we enjoy here, and it's been huge. I know Eva probably will be able to give you some numbers, where she, oh, there she is, some numbers on how many shots in arms that we've done today. But again, I'll let these gentlemen, and Eva, if you want to come up, too, certainly. But again, thank you for your ongoing support of Operation Safe in our efforts to make Clay County a healthier place to live and work. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person, please.
Good evening. My name is Steve Reinchis. I'm president and CEO of North Kansas City Hospital. I want to thank the Clay County Commission for this inaugural gift, a public grant for support of Operation Safe. Operation Safe has been a tremendous coalition trying to serve the community during this pandemic, and I now welcome Clay County as one of our coalition partners. It has been a tremendous effort that has been both a public, private, and medical partnership between Cerner Corporation, Clay County Health, Liberty Hospital, and North Kansas City Hospital. Eva Karp, representing Cerner Corporation, will give you the most up-to-date numbers. But on four days' notice, the healthcare workers collaborating with Clay County Health and Cerner Corporation stood up a mass vaccination center, and in that first week, we administered nearly 5,000 vaccines to our community. And since that time, remarkable progress has been made against the pandemic. And with that, I would like to turn it over to my colleague, David Fies.
Thank you, Steve. Again, I'm David Fies, the CEO of Liberty Hospital, and I do want to thank you so much for considering our request. This is an important step to help us collectively find what we've done. We, again, it's been expensive to have our staff there and all the supplies and everything, but we will give you the current numbers that we vaccinated. But again, it's been a great effort. We've really stepped up and served our community, and we're getting back to work. You know, if you look at our census in both hospitals, the number of COVID patients has dropped dramatically, and it's because of a lot of the efforts to vaccinate our community that's made a difference. So, again, So again, sincere thanks for supporting this. I know we'll ask for some more support, but again, thank you very much for your support, and it is much appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Eva Karp. I'm the Chief Clinical and Patient Safety Officer for Cerner and the executive that's been accountable for the Cerner's role in Operation Safe. The partnership has been pretty strong. We would like more partnership and volunteers, but we also would love more people to be vaccinated this week. So if you haven't been vaccinated, I'm going to ask you to show up or log on to Operation Safe and get your family members vaccinated. I want to give you the data to date. We've had 26 clinics, 16 first-dose clinics, and 10 second-dose clinics. Our clinics remaining are seven days. For second-dose clinics, Thursday and Friday are our last first-day clinics, first-dose clinics. We've administered 77,563 vaccines, and 42,688 of those were first doses, 34,895 were second doses. So 74,895 people are fully vaccinated, and we expect to exceed 60,000 by the time we have finished with Operation Safe. We have 24,674 doses remaining, and we are vaccinating over 4,000 people a day, which is a pretty high-throughput clinic. We're on average of 11.25 doses per vial, and on the Moderna, and 6.81 for Pfizer, which exceeds the average of most organizations that are giving vaccines. And I will give that to Danny, the pharmacist that comes from North Kansas City, to help us accomplish that. We have given a total of 3,745 unique volunteers to date, and we have over 50,000 hours in volunteer time. So as you can see, it takes a village to accomplish this, but the village has come to the fire, and we're doing all up we can to put the fire out. So please help us get everyone vaccinated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. By the way, I understand that this, this program has been held up as a model statewide of how, how it's done correctly. If you could make a quick comment on that, we'd appreciate it.
I would, just to add to that, Commissioner, I was on the phone today with the Missouri Hospital Association, and in July, they're going to do a debrief on the effectiveness of the vaccine rollout, and Operation Safe will be held as the model in the state of Missouri.
Very good. With that, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, I move that we adopt 2021-104.
Thank you. Motion has been made for the adoption of Resolution 2021-104. Discussion. We'll go ahead and, and why don't you do the opening remark on this, Commissioner Carpenter, then I'll come back to you for close.
Oh, sure thing. Yeah, well, you know, I, I look forward to getting these funds to you as quickly as possible, and it is certainly intended as only the start. You know, we, as the commission, I think, as expeditiously, expeditiously as possible, hope to get some additional funds to you from ARP. You know, we heard from our treasurer, we're waiting on treasury for some guidance, should be soon. And I, you know, as quickly as we can get that money out the door to you, the better, in my opinion. And I do hope that one of the things, and I, you know, this will be up to you all, but I hope one of the things that some of these funds, especially the later funds, can help pay for is increased and extended publicity in terms of getting people through the door. Obviously, to date, as you know, the most eager people who wanted to get vaccinated have done so at this point, and we're now shifting into a population that will require additional encouragement. And any type of local entity, like the Clay County Health Department or their local hospital, their local doctors, hearing from them, I think, can make a big difference, hopefully, in convincing folks to get vaccinated. And so, yeah, look forward to continuing to work with you all to get that done.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to thank you all for coming in today and, and giving us all the background on this, and I really enjoyed coming down and having the tour with you all. You guys have done a great effort. This is wonderful, and the men and women and the countless hours that they've put in to help keep our community safe, it's wonderful. It's wonderful. And Operation Safe is a, it's a terrific situation down there, and I'm, I'm glad to see that it's going to be a model for, for future vaccination sites and, and for people to see this, because you guys are doing a terrific job. So I'm, I'm really glad we were able to support you guys and get you some additional resources.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
To quote an old commercial, not only am I a supporter, but I'm a customer. I very much appreciate the efficiency and, and the, the great way that the process went from the point of view, as someone who was a recipient of a vaccine, I thought it went splendidly. I thought it was as enjoyable an experience as it can be. It was, it was, it was entirely pleasant, given the circumstances, and certainly appreciate the hard work that you, you put in there. This is obviously going to close out the particular issue that we had, that is to say, the CARES Act funding, which is a specific program. I think it's very fitting that we are closing this out by helping to support the solution. When we began this last year, these funds were given to us to try to deal with the problem, basically answering the problem, and the answer is obviously vaccination. And so the, the fact that we are being able to use this, this, these funds for that particular purpose, which is the only way that this will be defeated, is probably the, the perfect crescendo to this particular CARES Act program. And as we go forward, hopefully, we can be working together. Certainly appreciate being included as a partner with, with your efforts, but clearly the credit goes in very large part to those men and women who man those stations, who are, who are making sure that those vaccines get into arms with the most, under the best circumstances possible. I was impressed by just the sheer logistical issue of putting so many people in place and it running as smoothly as it did. So certainly, congratulations, and there's no doubt in my mind that these funds will be spent more wisely than, than almost any other place I can imagine.
With, with that, Commissioner Carpenter, if you'd like any closing remarks or to close.
Thank you, Commissioner. No, I get my second vaccine there next week. Look forward to it. Last time I was there, David was there volunteering, so look forward to getting that done next week. And my parents have gone there, my in-laws, many people. And you all have saved lives by putting together such an efficient and effective operation, and I'm eternally grateful to you for it. And with that, I close.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. That was, it's very kind of you to be here on such short notice.
Thank you.
That brings us to 2021-91. Mr. Administrator, please proceed.
Commissioners, 2021-91 is to approve a sole-source vendor agreement with Lexipol LLC for a law enforcement policy manual, and I will turn the comments over to the sheriff's office.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Commission. Captain Amy Agdarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. We spoke last week about this issue that's before you tonight, and this is, once again, this is our request to identify Lexipol as a sole-source vendor. Lexipol is the provider of the software that runs our online training, or I'm sorry, our online policy manual. We have utilized Lexipol for seven, eight years now, and we believe that the services provided by Lexipol have served us very well. They are vetted. There are state-specific attorneys that look at these policies and make recommendations to us, so they are fresh always, and we have staff dedicated to maintaining this policy manual. So I believe that our, there is a significant reduction in liability by having such a fresh policy manual that is always up to date and state-specific. And we have not yet found a vendor that can give us that same product at, at the cost that, that we pay for Lexipol now. It would be inefficient for us to change vendors at this point. So we would ask your approval to recognize Lexipol as a sole-source vendor.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Is there a motion related to 2021-91?
I'll make the motion to approve 2021-91.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2021-91. Discussion. Are there any citizens who would like to comment? Anyone present? I see none. Commissioner Carpenter?
No, thank you. I appreciate the presentation last week and happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. We appreciate the presentation. Commissioner Thompson, you are free to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you.
That brings us to 2021-91. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-97 is to approve an agreement for appraisal services with J.F. Ryan and Associates. This is intended to assist the assessor's office with the tax commission hearing with LeCleese Gas Company, and I would defer to the assessor for any further comments.
Please proceed.
Kathy Reinhardt, Clay County Assessor. In an effort to get this off our books, we've been fighting with LeCleese for, since 2014. And the one thing that the state tax commission has said that our, our weak spot is, is our appraisal, because LeCleese's appraiser has got a lot of experience, our appraiser does not. So in an effort to bring up the value of our appraisal, we would like to hire this company and see if they can help us get this settled, because if we can get 14 and 15 settled, we'll be able to get the rest of them settled, too, and get it off the books, and I won't have to leave a mess for somebody else. But if you look up people that are experts on personal property, there are very, very few, and this company is, they're outstanding. So I would ask that you go ahead and approve this. If we use them, we'll spend the money. If we don't use them, we won't spend the money, and it is in my 201 fund. So it's, I'm not asking for the commission for any money. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the assessor? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2021-97?
Yes, Commissioner, I move that we adopt 2021-97.
Thank you. Motion has been made for the approval of 2021-97. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
That brings us to, thank you very much, assessor. That brings us to 2021-102. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-102 is to approve IFB number 0221, which pertains to a bridge replacement on northeast 188th Street over New Hope Creek. It's BRO-B024, and I would defer to the Highway Department for further comments.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Commission. Carl Walters, Deputy County Administrator. Brought to you last week, this 188th Street Bridge replacement. As I had told you before, it's a haunch bridge that the engineer drew up. It's got a skew in it to go around the corner so we don't encroach onto the historical site of the church and the school of the Camp New Hope. And so this is what they brought to us, and you'd asked last week about the bidding process. Haunch bridges aren't well-known in the state of Missouri, and I say that with, probably with MoDOT, but non-MoDOT roads, not so much, but this is what they drew up. I came into this unexpectedly, and so this is what we have. We can't take it back. It's what we have to do. So.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the deputy administrator?
I just want to say thanks again for the explanation last week and again this evening, and look forward to supporting this important project.
Thank you.
Very well. Is there a motion, or is, are there any comments from anyone present? Seeing none. Is there a motion related to 2021-102?
I will make the motion happily, because we want to get this bridge fixed. Please, let's get it fixed for 2021-102.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2021-102. Discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That brings us to 2021 ordinance, excuse me, ordinance 10. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021 ordinance 10 is to approve, approve the imposition of a 2% tax for the 911 emergency telephone service. Added a little more detail in this ordinance to give some clarity. This is an ordinance that was passed by a majority of the votes of the county citizens on April of 1982. So this is an annual renewal, and it's something that we also added language as to when every year, there's a little bit of, of indefinitional as to when that would need to be on the, on the commission docket from year to year, and we've added some language, so there will be a regular recurl going forward on that. But this, this is a, this is a vote of the citizens-approved tax that we are simply renewing this year.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the administrator? Commissioner Thompson?
No, Commissioner, but I will say this ordinance shows a date in here that is older than me, so this is, I don't know what that means.
That sounds a little bit like bragging.
Maybe. I'm gonna, I'm going to do that as long as I can, because soon it won't be, so.
Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Carpenter, would you also care to make a comment illustrating that I am older than either one of you two?
I would never, Commissioner, but I appreciate the administrator's comments.
Very well. Is there any comment from anyone here present? I believe we have one person would like to comment and comment. Mr. Sheriff, when you are prepared, please proceed.
Thank you, Commissioners. Sheriff Will Aiken, Clay County Sheriff's Office. I was not able to make the last meeting, but I did hear about this come up on the agenda. This is a, this was voted a long time ago. I was barely, barely around, so I'll just throw one in there. But I will say, just to kind of put things in perspective, with this 2% cell, 2% what are we calling it?
Tariff.
Tariff? Yes, tariff rate. This is back when landlines were prevalent, long before cell phones. Right now in Clay County, we bring in roughly, and, and I say roughly because I don't have the current numbers. When I was the, when I was over communications, the 911 center, I spent a lot of time with this, and we bring in roughly around $400,000 a year, and I'm sure that, that number has changed. But the bill for Clay County to cover all 911 services for all the public safety answering points or 911 centers in Clay County is roughly $1.2 million. And so this is, this is something that helps pay for that, but as time goes by and people continue to let their landlines go, this amount will continue to drop. And this is also the reason why or what prompted the cellphone tax, if you will, that the state of Missouri passed, which the state of Missouri was the last state in the union to pass that tax. And of course, I think Commissioner Carpenter can speak to that. He was well-involved in that conversation in Jeff City. So I just wanted to throw that out there to let you know how important this is, how important this is to 911 communications and making sure that we have the most updated system in Clay County. And I'm open for any questions, if, if there are any.
Thank you. Appreciate that, and I think it's, it's blindingly obvious that taxes on cell, on, excuse me, landlines is a clearly diminishing source of revenue, and the cost to maintain 911 service, which is a vital governmental function, is ever-increasing. So we have to do what we can do to make sure that we are able to provide people with that service, which is so very, very important. Thank you for those, those comments. Is there a motion related to 2021 ordinance 10?
I move that we approve 2021 ordinance 10.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2021 ordinance 10. Discussion. Commissioner Thompson, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Is there anyone present who would like to add any further comments? Commissioner Carpenter, you are free to close.
Thank you, and thanks to our sheriff for the presentation, and I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
That brings us to the final item on our regular agenda, 2021-88. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-88 is a request for waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes from the, a business in Clay County, Fabricor, Inc. I would be curious to know if there's anybody in the room here.
There's, there are two, there's one person.
We apparently have representatives of both.
Right, so we have two people.
Is Fabricor here?
I'm here.
Okay. Then I'll let you talk first.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead and finish your presentation, Mr. Administrator, then we will proceed. Did that- Did that conclude your presentation?
Yes.
Very well. I believe there's a citizen making her way to the podium. Once again, I would remind you to make sure that the green light is on and to identify yourself and to speak clearly. Obviously, the masks make it a little more difficult to be understood, so please proceed.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank you for letting me be able to speak here tonight. My name is Barbara Summers. I'm the president of Fabricor Incorporated. I'm here to represent Fabricor in lieu of the, the administrative assistant Beth Swanson not being present. I would like to read the letter written by Beth Swanson explaining the details of our situation, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Is it, I assume it's not terribly long?
No, it's not long.
Very good.
And this was addressed to Ms. McAvoy, and...
By the way, Ms. McAvoy is... Yes, the, the letter is in the record. I wanted to make sure we identified the office that Ms. McAvoy occupies. She is the collector.
Is the collector.
I'm sorry, you may have said that and I didn't hear it.
Okay, I, okay. I'm writing to request cancellation and a refund of all assessed penalties and interest for 2020 on both our business property taxes and real estate taxes. The details of our original requests are in the attached letter and documentation that we submitted to your office on January 22nd, 2021. Our request for waiver of the penalties and interest, however, was not honored, and we were told Fabricor had to pay both penalties and interest for 2020 because it was not the county's error. In our attached documentation, you will see that we sent our original payment on December 14th, 2020. We were told on a couple of occasions subsequent to our mailing it in, that Clay County was running behind and to wait for your office to process our payment. We were told the tax payment checks were in your vault and taken out each day by staff to post them. We were told many payments were not received on time this year because of a post office delay. We do not know what happened to our check. We mailed it like we have done for the past 13 years. We have been a Clay, 13 years we have been a Clay County business. We never had issues with any of these, of those previous payments not being received or processed. Your receiving the check and your processing our check is outside of our control as the taxpayer. You're not receiving our payment was not a sign of willful neglect on our part. We issued a company check as payment and mailed it like we, we mail all of our business checks. We waited a reasonable amount of time for your office to get caught up from the backlog your staff had mentioned, and when our payment still hadn't posted, we, we acted immediately, issued a replacement check to pay the balance due on January 22nd by dropping it off in the drop box at the Clay County Annex location, which is close to our office. This payment was the principal payment for the proper amount due. Check total was $57,015.44. I'm not going to break it out, but anyway, because we needed copies of our tax receipts, we were forced to pay the penalties and interest prior to January 31st, 2021, or the amount due would increase as of February 1st, 2021. Because we needed the paid tax receipts for other purposes, our hand was forced to pay an additional $5,892.08 in penalties and interest to the Clay County Collector's Office. In addition, due to COVID, we had no chance, choice but to pay online since the payment would be processed within 24 hours, and we also incurred transaction fees of $144.35 for using a credit card. These were paid on January 28th, 2021. See attached payment confirmation. For these reasons, we request that our penalties and interest and credit card transaction fees be refunded back to Fabricor.
Does any, are there any questions with the lady? I believe the, the assessor wanted to also make comment?
Kathy Reinhardt, Clay County Assessor. May I start out by saying, I've never laid eyes on this woman before. I have no dog in this fight, but the one thing that, I mean, the assessment department did our job. The collector did her job. But the one thing that rings true with this statement is that either my office or the Collector's Office told her staff that the check had not been processed yet, just to wait. Now, it, I think that's an error on the county's part. Maybe we shouldn't have done that. I understood that Lydia stood up here last week, and I'm sorry I wasn't here, and Lydia's absolutely right. It's not a county error per the letter of the law. However, when we're giving misleading information to somebody, that's a problem, and I have been doing this for a long, long time, 23, almost 24 years, and I have never heard anyone tell somebody, write another check. If your other one comes in, we'll hold it in the bank and we'll send, we'll send it back to you, we'll put it in our vault and we'll send it back to you. If that's going to be our policy, that's fine. I can live with that, but I can tell you what we have told people in the past. Cancel your first check, write a second check, and somehow or other, those checks pass and nothing's been paid, and then we charge penalty. So I just, I don't feel right about this, because I know my staff's probably told her office, because those of you that have been here in December know what kind of hell's breaking loose here. They'll call anybody and talk to anybody just to get a person on the phone, and when you've got temporary people answering the phone, or you have non-seasoned people answering the phone, or you have a phone service, it's misfortune. It's truly misfortune. I can tell you that by law, Lydia cannot give back the hundred-and-some-dollar fee for the charge card. I know that for a fact. I don't know what you're going to decide today. I, I just think if we're going to have those kind of policies, then they need to be online to tell people, if you call and your check has not cleared, to, you know, bring in another check, do something, because it, that, that's just a huge amount of money. So that's all I have to say, and like I say, I have no dog in this fight. This company turns in their assessment list early every year. They, they must have a hell of a bookkeeper, because nobody in Clay County turns in their list the way these people do. So I would throw myself in the mercy of the court. Please do something. I mean, even if you don't feel comfortable giving it all back, give them something, because they really are good. They're a good company, so that's all I have to say.
Just, just to...
I don't know her from boo.
Just to clarify...
I don't even know what they do, so...
Is it, is it the practice?
Huh?
Is, is there a, is it the usual practice that a taxpayer would be told that yes, their, their payment is being processed when in fact it may not? Because there's no way a person answering the phone would know that.
There's no way of knowing.
Exactly.
It's like when somebody calls in March and says, have you got my assessment list back? It's like, oh my God, up until this year, when we started doing it all online, we'd have stacks, thousands of them sitting around. It's like, we haven't gotten to it yet. I can't tell you if it's in here or not. Just wait. And I'm sure somebody in my office, I'd almost guarantee it, said, just wait, they haven't got it processed yet, they will process it, they're behind. Whether they were or not, we don't know, but I can almost guarantee you that was something the assessment department said, and it's not that it's really a county error, but I believe we have misled this company and this woman, and for that, I apologize. I don't have a way of paying that myself, but that's up to you three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions of the assessor's office? Is there anyone else here who would care to comment on this issue? Let's go ahead and put a motion on the, on the floor so that we can go ahead and open discussion. Is there a motion on 2021-88?
I'll move that we adopt 2021-88.
Very well. Motion has been made for 2021-88. Discussion?
My apologies, what's the...
For the approval?
Well, I assume that my only option of, to move to discussion is to, to move for the adoption. If there's an alternative, I'm happy to entertain that.
I think we've done this in the past, so if you look at 2021-88, basically, you would, you could make a motion to approve or deny, there's a box to check. So I think the motion would be to do one or the other. The discussion of the motion.
Oh, I see what you mean, because it does have a, yeah, this is kind of you.
There's terms of approach, so you need to designate which one was what approach motion is.
Right, so that would be unique, okay.
Is there an option to discuss before we choose one of those paths, or is that not an option? Because I would love your opinion in terms of your legal view as to whether or not we have the legal ability to, to refund, because this doesn't seem like a case of the taxpayer doing anything wrong, but it may be a constraint to the law, and I would love your opinion.
Well, I think there's not really a motion to vote on unless there's, unless it's definitely to be approved or not. What I would suggest is pick one, then have a discussion. If they don't have a discussion, turns out, you could withdraw the motion or move forward.
Okay.
Because I know we don't have anything to vote on until there's an end to all voting motion.
Right.
Well, you know, I made the motion to, to adopt. I'm happy, it seems like it's mostly semantics anyway, so I'm happy to stick with that if that sounds reasonable.
So approval?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
To approve, if you may, to approve the waiver, so essentially defining for the company.
Well, right. There'll be a discussion and a vote, is that correct?
Right. And by the way, this is really very unique. I'm not sure I've seen very much of this, even though I've been here six years, I don't recall seeing the, the box checked very frequently at all, so it's, it's a little bit unique and it's a little bit confusing that usually it's just approve or disapprove, but in this case, there was an alternative, I guess, that needed to be indicated, so. That being said, that opens up the discussion for the approval of 2021-88. That would be checking the approves box. Discussion? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner. So I, I have spent a great deal of time looking over all of this, and I'm very sympathetic to the situation, and you, our company here has a long track record of, of paying on time and paying in full to, and making sure they're up to date on all the, all their fees that they, they owe. I know, I just know that the Collector's Office receives a, a lot of, of things that come late. That is why the, you know, the TMF fund is so large. I worry we're going to be setting a bad precedence if we go down this road of, if we start waiving things. I'm, I'm having a hard, this, this is a, this is a complicated situation. It is. I'm not sure in what department it was told, that it was just sitting there and, and, you know, and just wait for the check, because I know, I, I call down there after I, I pay my taxes, I, I call down there and I make sure that it gets processed. I watch my bank account, and when it gets close to December 31st and it's not, I'm, I'm standing at that counter. I'm, you know, I, I would be willing to, as the commission, if I could get consensus, and I'd make the motion that we would maybe waive the interest associated with this, if we could do that.
Mr. Counselor, might I suggest that the proper way to proceed would be, since the motion on the floor is to approve the, approve the...
Request for waiver.
Yeah, thank you. I didn't have it in front of me. Would not then the proper method to go forward would be then for Commissioner Thompson to then offer an amendment that would, that would do what she has just outlined?
Yes, I think that would be right, yes. So, so right now, the motion, the way I'm reading the packet, I think the motion is to approve the request for waiver of the entire contested amount of 5892.08 is the current motion, and the suggestion here would be some smaller subset of that.
Yeah, do you have the, Commissioner, do you have the, I don't know if you have the figures that are in front of you? If you could, go ahead and read those, that way we...
Well, we're not 100% sure if that's quite the total. This is what we're...
I have some confidence in the accuracy of that. It would not necessarily be to the penny. We certainly could find out, but...
For the purpose...
I did that math just right here on the table.
So for the purposes of being able to go forward with this thing, perhaps the best way to, to do this would be if that is your intention, to just say that you would, you would weigh the interest, and that, that way it could be calculated later, and then, but it would be good for us to know exactly how the, not exactly, but to get a rough idea of how those numbers pan out, to see how much money we're actually talking about in, in a ballpark-y way. Does that sound reasonable, Mr.?
If I look at the second page of your packet, it appears to me that someone on behalf of the, someone on behalf of the county filled this out, and about three-fourths of the way down, they've identified that the penalties were 2598, I think that's an eight and four cents.
Right.
And the amount of special assessments was 3294.04. I'm assuming that would be...
The interest?
The interest and potentially some category of fees, since fees are actually referenced in the statute, but I think since the county filled this out, we perhaps could rely on those two numbers.
So what we would be looking at to, to go the route that Commissioner Thompson is suggesting would be to, would be to allow a reduction of, again, what appears to be here to be 3294.04. Is that accurate?
If I could speak to the counsel, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't necessarily go with the, this is probably right, and I think these are rollups. I think this doesn't have any, this is two elements of penalty and interest. It is, it is divided in, in penalty and or interest. So I've got a document deeper in the packet that shows some actual dollar amounts for interest, because that's what you have on that sheet there in total, right here by your thumb.
Okay, so I've got, I'll tell you what, go ahead and just, let me sit, because I, I'd rather have you just go ahead and recite that number, that way we have, if that's the number you feel, yeah, comfortable with, so that you're kind of reporting to us what you see as that number.
Okay, well, this is within my level of ability to contribute.
Right.
What I, so this goes back to the issue of the statutes that Collector McAvoy referenced about the inability of, of the, to refund those, but I don't think there's any, and Counselor, I would ask your comment on that. I don't think there's any statute that demands payment of interest. Perhaps there is, but if there's not, the interest that I calculate unscientifically is $838.58.
Okay.
That's what I believe is the interest that's the part of the total amount. Ma'am, does that make any sense to you?
Yes, yes, then the, the, there was a penalty fee of $63.65 on the 2598.04, and there was a penalty fee for $30.70 to the 3294.04. Those two amounts came up to the full total penalty fee of 5892.08.
So that might be a number I would add to this, because I'm not sure I, but what I, what I added specifically as identified as interest, what I took off the sheets is specifically stated as interest.
And I have not, I did not calculate any of these, because I didn't think that would even be accurate anyway.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay. Yeah, and, and the thing is, because of the law is kind of specific on this, that's why we're trying to walk this to make sure that we're not, we're not, we're not, in fact, violating the law ourselves, so that we need to make sure that what, what we are doing, we have the ability to do.
We've given misinformation to these people.
But we've got to, the thing is to, to, to know that. Right now, we...
I can swear that we gave misinformation to this company.
I'm sorry, could you go ahead and, and go to the podium and, so, because for the recording? There.
Kathy Reinhardt, Clay County Assessor. I know we told these people wrong, and I realize, oh, well, you can come to the courthouse and you can do this and you can do that, but when you've got a history of 13 years of paying and having your tax bill and your check cashed in a timely manner, and you continue to call and continue to call, and you finally get through to somebody that's answering the phone, and they say, just wait, they're not caught up yet, I mean, that's the one thing that bothers me the most. It's like, and I got news for you guys. If someone hadn't stood up against slavery, by God, we'd still have it in this country. That's just the way I feel about it. I, I don't think, I don't think we're doing justice here. I really don't, and, and I realize that, oh, you don't want to open up a can of worms because everybody will stand up here and say that, but... will stand up here and say that, but if you put on the website and you put in the bills, if your check doesn't clear and you've called, then by God, you better bring your fanny down here and give us cash or pay us again. But they weren't told that. They were not told that.
Commissioner Thompson.
I, I have a major problem with this. $800 out of 5800? And, and I realize the law says, Lydia's absolutely right. The law's black and white. There's no leeway here. But I'm telling you, when things are wrong, they need to be rectified. And this is wrong. I'm not going to say another word.
Kathy, I have a quick, Kathy, I have a quick question for you.
Do you know too? Nope, nope, I got to listen to another word, I don't know, I don't care.
If you think, just tell me quickly, do you, do you think your office made the error?
I'm done, thank you.
Nice try.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Uh, yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Carpenter.
Okay, thank you. To Kevin. The law says, correct me if I'm wrong. That if there was a county error, then we can refund. Is that correct?
It is narrower than that.
Okay.
Go ahead and turn on your mic, please.
The statute says that any taxpayer claiming that the county made an error or omission in determining taxes owed may submit a written request to the county commission. And that the county commission can then approve the refund, you know, I guess as the county commission would do it, but, but the statute does say error or omission in determining taxes.
Okay, and so our county assessor says that her office made an error. Does that suffice for the statute? Because, you know, I, I'm sure that Fabricor paid their taxes on time. I personally dealt with USPS on delivering mail, both to me and mail that I've sent. And I'm sure it would be incredibly frustrating if it was of, you know, this financial magnitude. So I want to refund you if we can under the law. If the law doesn't allow us, then the law doesn't allow us. We have our county assessor saying that her office made an error. I believe that's what she said. I'm not, I guess I'm not certain.
I, well, I don't think the county assessor thinks that her office made an error.
Well, that's what I was just trying to get at.
I think, so I actually talked to the county assessor earlier today on this. She believes that someone in one of the offices certainly may have told the taxpayer, we've got the check, or we're holding the check, or we just have to process it yet or something.
What I heard was she thinks that probably somebody from her office said that. That's what she said.
The other office.
Well, that, that's what I heard her say this evening, more than once.
Well, that's why I wanted to clarify. I wanted her, I wanted just to make sure, because I know on the paperwork here, I think it's on the third page, she says specifically, this is not an assessment error. So I'm like, give me something. If you, if you think it was an error in your department, we can work with that. But I, you know.
But the thing is, and, and this is something that's bothered me a little bit, is we're talking about different office holders, talking about other offices. This is the collector saying it's not an assessment problem. We have the assessor saying it's not a collector issue. It seems to me that what needs to, what we need to have, because none of us were present when any of these conversations were had, for the, the county would need to admit there was an error. We have no objective way of knowing whether an error was made. I'm wondering whether it's possible for us to basically, because that's, that's put in a way that is not, that, that phrase is, is put in a way that I'm a little wary of, to tell you the truth. I'm wondering if there is some way that we can make this contingent on an admission from the collector that there was an error, in fact, made by her office. If she were to say, yes, I believe we made an error, I'm not even sure if we may have made an error would even do it under the law. But if she will say that, that gives us what we need to hang our hat on as far as being able to say yes, and not open the door to, to, to any, anyone who, who may be late for some other reason and may not be in, in, in the same situation. Does that make sense at all, Mr. Counselor?
I certainly understand where you're going with that. However, I, I'm pretty clear, the way I heard the collector last week and the way she's filled out this form, she does not believe that her office made an error, is the way that, that, that certainly, so, you know, if we were to put that in her court, I think she would hit it right back and say, nope, not, no, no collector error in this case.
So.
That, that's what I think I've heard.
And I would, I would, I would agree with that, except for, like I say, this, and I assume this, the phrase that was on there was written by the, by the collector, is that right?
Well, this is the assessor, and then that was for the collector.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that was written by the, okay, let me. I see, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought that was a comment from the, from the collector, not the assessor. Okay. That's the only way I see to, to go forward with being able to do that. I, I, you know, I have a lot of sympathy for what's going on here, but I also, and I appreciate the idea that Commissioner Thompson is proposing a compromise here, albeit, you know, I'm sure that you would prefer to do it, you know, to be more generous, but at this point, I think we are, I, I mean, that's the only other way I see going forward is, I, I don't recall right off whether she said those magic words, we did not make an error, but she really kind of has to affirmatively say for the law to kick in, that we did make an error, or at least even if she said, I believe my office may have made an error, that would be enough for us to go forward. Is that, is that about right, Mr. Counselor?
I think so. I mean, I think I heard her, I think she believes that the, the payment got lost by the post office. It never even made it to our front door. That's what I think the, the collector would say. And of course, if the post office made the error, it is equally unfortunate, but it doesn't get to a county error. And I think the county error that the assessor is pointing out is that she believes misinformation may have been disseminated. I'm not necessarily agreeing with that, but I think that would, is where she finds the error potentially existing.
And the thing is, she obviously does not know what was said, or what is being said from the collector's office, being in the assessor's office.
Yes.
It, yeah. That, that's, that's about as far as my, my thinking through this thing takes me.
Commissioner, would it be, would this be an appropriate item maybe we put on for next week? And then we'll see if we can get the collector and the assessor, maybe in the same room at the same time, and we can just ask some basic questions? Because this is a large fee, and I don't want to force somebody to have to, to go forward with this without having all the information.
That is certainly would be, and, I mean, obviously, we've got a motion on the floor. I'm, I'm sure that we could work through that parliamentary obstacle, but certainly, if that were the case, we could table this till next time. We're kind of drawing it out a little bit, I understand that. But we, we've kind of got to get to the bottom of it to, to some degree.
I, I certainly understand that perspective. I don't think new information's going to come out. I certainly think it's probably the, maybe the thing to do. I certainly, I understand that, based on what Ms. McAvoy said last week and Ms. Reinhardt said this week. I get, I'm not sure what we'll get when it comes back.
And, and the thing is, my point is, we have nothing to really grab a hold of because for it to be at the county's fault. It either has to be proven to be the county's fault, or the county has to admit fault. And absent those two things, it doesn't really trigger the, the law. I'm trying to give as much latitude as possible to the citizen.
Yeah, yeah, I think the collector would say it probably was lost by the post office.
Did you, yeah, please go ahead and, and make sure the mic is still on, please.
My name's Barbara Summers, I'm the president of Fabricor. And I've been listening to the arguments, and I do agree, and I don't remember your name.
It's Megan Thompson.
May. I agree with what you said about checking and going, you know, to, to make sure that everything's gone through. I think Beth was negligent at that point. And I, I don't, I'm not asking for interest. I just want to get the money back for the penalty. I really don't care about the interest. I really don't. That was not in my intention. I wouldn't mind having the $144 for the, you know, from the, from the, from the credit card that, that we paid the penalty fees from. The other thing that I would ask is that I would not, it would not show up on any of, of the website that I was late paying my taxes? You know, I mean, that's important to me. So I would want that waived so that it doesn't show up. And I really don't care about the $800, man, seriously. So that's, if that helps.
Yeah, Mr. Counselor, would you please remain there for a moment? The counselor may have a question, if you don't mind.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Okay, in your letter, and I, I don't think you wrote this letter, is that right? I'm just looking for some clarification.
January, is it the January 22nd letter?
February 2nd.
Oh, I don't have that one.
Is there a January?
Okay. Well, the January 22nd one went, this one went to the collector's office, and, and Beth actually named people that she had spoken to at the collector's office. One of the lady's names was Delma.
Okay. Okay, so here's, here's the question. It looks to me like you mailed it on December 14th.
Yes.
That's the, that's what you, you contend. It also looks like that there was a call on January 12th asking about the status.
We had, we had a licensed vehicle, and she's, she wasn't.
Let me, let me finish where I'm going. Was there a call between December 14th and January 12th?
That I don't know.
And the, and the question, there really is, when?
Exactly.
Okay.
She's pretty good about putting that down, but I, I'm not sure on, if you look at the February 2nd letter, there, at the very bottom, did she list some different times that she talked to people?
On which one?
On the February 2nd.
Yes, the fourth page, like the fourth or fifth page.
I'm sorry, I only have one page on that.
It skips a page. It's the next page.
Oh, it skipped a page over. So the February 2nd, first page of that letter, next page, it's January 22, and then the page two, it's just, it's in incorrect order.
Oh, got it. So the question, I guess I'm trying to understand is, was a, was a phone call made to the county before December 31st? There's not one set forth. It looks like there's a call on January 12th, for sure.
And that I can't, I can't say. I really don't. I know that she was in constant communication. I have my file sitting over there, and I don't know if she made notes in the file, but I can go look.
I, that might be helpful, I mean, because the reality is, if no alleged misrepresentation by the county occurred before they were overdue, I don't know that it matters. If, if the first conversation was in January, there's, it would not have mattered.
Because it would have been late at that time.
It was already late.
So what you're saying is that the, the conversation would need to have taken place prior to Jan, December 31st?
Yes, and then you would have to find that the conversation was relevant to what your consideration is. But if the, if the allegation of error is in a, in a phone conversation, we were given bad information, that conversation would, would have had to have occurred in December to be relevant, I mean, I would suggest.
Well, we can, we can, I, you know, we can take a moment, even look through that. I want you to make sure that if you've got, if you, do you think you have that information?
I'll go look at, I will go get my file.
Yeah, go right ahead. Yeah, we, we can take some time here, and let's do that.
According to the file that I have here, I don't have anything dated before December 31st. But I know that we, we would do that because it, it's due on December 31st. But I do, I do believe that she acted probably two weeks after it was due. Because we didn't get notification. We kept thinking, well, COVID, you know, the post office, it's just running late. And so we, we were sitting on it a while. And then when my car had to be, had to, you know, have renewals on it, it started getting a little more pressing, and I think that's when she, on January 14th or whenever it was, that's when she started getting a little bit more pushy about it. And then I told her, I said, I do not want this thing to go any further. Pay the penalty now. First of all, I need the information to title my, to get my car renewed. And the other part of it is, I don't want to roll it into another month. And then another month, you know, so that's kind of the way that played out.
Okay.
Do you have, would you like, have a question or comment, Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. I mean, I, just to the current discussion about when calls are made or not. I mean, in the January 22nd letter, there isn't a date established, but in the, in the second paragraph, it says I called back on January 12th. And prior to that, in the first paragraph, it says, this year, however, we did not receive the paid tax receipt in the mail like we received previously, and I contacted the collector's office for an update. I was told the payment had not been processed yet, that the postings were behind, and to wait about a week and check back. So the, the call on January 12th is presumably after that initial call. Doesn't mean that the initial call was before December 31st. But it, you know, just to clarify that it doesn't look like the 12th was the first call.
I agree, 100%.
And like I said, we were waiting because everything else had been delayed in the post office, so we just thought, you know, it's, it's coming. And it doesn't say it's right or wrong, but, you know, that was our reasoning. And, and then when it, it just started, we started pushing it a little harder to find out if there was something wrong.
If I made.
Yes, please.
One final clarification, but it does sound like all the calls were with the collector's office, not with the assessor's office. Is that, is that fair? Because one of the discussions we're having here is, is the assessor's office acknowledging that perhaps they made an error, in which case we could, under the law, do the refund. But if the calls were only with the collector's office, and the collector's office is not acknowledging an error, then we may be constrained by law as to being able to issue the refund. I think I'm understanding that all correctly. If I'm not, anybody, feel free to let me know.
I've got some certified mail receipts here, and I don't know if they're in your packets or not. But she sent them to Joe, John Carpenter, Clay County Commissioner, Megan Thompson, Clay County Commissioner, Lydia McAvoy, Jerry Newark, presiding commissioner.
Are, are any of those from December, are those from December, or those from January and February?
These are dated. Boy, where do you find the date?
I think those are probably when you made your appeal.
These are, these are all dated February 3rd.
Okay, those are from the appeal, okay. Because the, the December payment was sent regular mail, not certified, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought, too.
I mean, speaking for myself, I would be interested in, given the totality of the information, if our county Counselor has an opinion as to whether or not statute would allow the refund. It seems pretty clear that probably the check was paid on time. But that the question seems to be whether or not we would have any ability as a commission to refund it, or if statute, state statute would restrain us in that way. Obviously, our county Collector already came in last week and said that there was no error on her part. And if that's where the conversations were taking place, then those would be the relevant conversations. But ultimately, I will defer to your judgment as to state statute and whether or not we have the ability to refund, is my view.
The state statute is not as broad as maybe we would like to determine what an error is. It says error or omission in determining taxes. You know, my quick read of this, maybe not all that quick, is, it doesn't feel to me like it fits in the four corners of that statute. That being said, you know, the statute also seems to give the commission some, you know, ability to approve or disapprove. But, I mean, I don't think it fits quite in the four corners of the statute. It doesn't, I would like the statute to be more broad and give you more authority and more discretion to fix problems. I don't think it's written all that broadly. And the, the ironic part is, I'm pretty sure, and Commissioner Nolte, you might know this better than I, I'm pretty sure that the statute was actually intended to fix a perceived Clay County problem.
It was, and it was also meant to address the office of Collector.
Yeah.
Not, not, it wasn't contemplated to go beyond that, so that the Collector would have the ability, when they had an error, that they acknowledged, to be able to remedy that. The original issue that came forward was an error that, at that point, the Collector had said that was certainly their error. She admitted the error, but her problem was, she was unable under existing statute at the time. So this was a fix for that situation, to where, when the Collector said, I messed up, that they would be able to make the citizen hold, but it didn't go really beyond that. So you're right, it is fairly narrowly written for a specific issue that came up at that time.
Yeah, and I don't want to get too deep in this, maybe, but, I mean, you could try to read the statute, and I don't think it's a fair reading, but you could try to read the statute in a way that says, that distinguishes between error and omission in determining taxes. I don't think the punctuation would support that in the, in the statute. But you could say, well, it says error or omission in determining taxes, and make, perhaps make an argument that error is one thing, omission in determining taxes is another. I think the better read is probably error or omission in determining taxes, but you could, you could make the argument about the wording of the statute, and essentially the, the proper grammar usage and the punctuation of the statute. But unfortunately, I do think that the best reading is, it's an error or omission in determining taxes. And that doesn't feel like that's the case here, that there was no mistake made in the determination of taxes. There may have been a mistake made in process, in communication. But, but I think it's, you know, it's a fairly, I think it's a fairly narrow statute.
As I said, it was written with a specific type of error in mind. It could have been written more broadly, and obviously in retrospect, and it was written some, what, 12, 15 years ago, or whatever it was.
It looks like it was either 2008 or 2013. Those are the last two times this statute was amended.
It would have been, 2008 would be the, when I was familiar. With the 2013, I would not have been in the House, I wouldn't have known. So it sounds to me, and once again, it is written with, it appears, I know, I know what the intent was, but we got to go with what the written word says. The written word basically contemplates an error on the part of the, and I go back to the same point, on the part of the Collector. That means, that means there's two things, one of two things needs to happen. Either the Collector needs to say, yes, I made an error, or we need to determine that the Collector did indeed make an error, whether she admits it or not. Being able to do that without, without being able to talk to the person who may have given out that information, and that assumes that giving out incorrect information is an error. I would think it would be an error. So I, I think, I could, I could see the definition being stretched that far. But, I mean, whereas, we were, we're going to essentially get, have to get, we would have to have a finding that they had made an error.
Yeah.
One of those two things would have to happen. I'm, I'm not sure we're able to get, it sounds far more likely and far cleaner if the Collector decided to say that she had made an error. That would make, that would make the process much more smooth and much more easy to do. Because once we have said the Collector has made an error, she would have the option at some level, and I'm not sure there's a mechanism in place, but she would have then the option of saying, of contesting our judgment, for whatever reason.
Well, which would be interesting. I'm not sure that avenue exists, but, you know.
That's what I mean. I don't know exactly how it exists. I mean, we, there isn't really, there's nothing really there that contemplates this particular situation at the moment.
Yeah.
So, well, we have, where are we at right now, just to recap, is, we have a motion on the floor. There was an amendment contemplated but not made.
Not offered, I think that's right.
Right, so we were discussing the possible amendment. And that's kind of where we're at, at this moment, so I just wanted to kind of bring us back to focus of, this is where we're at. We're going to need to, at some point, go forward with this one way or the other. So I'd open it up for, for commissions' further discussion.
Commissioners, I think there's only, there's only, there's really just two solutions here. We could either table this until next week, in case, if there is some other information, do you think, the woman who handles the letters and made the payment, do you think she would have it written somewhere?
This, this is the file.
That's it? Okay, so she doesn't have it documented anywhere, that she spoke with anybody, like she didn't, because if she would just, if we had something?
She would have emails.
Okay.
And she might have calls. But I, if, if it's not in this file, the emails, maybe. But the calls, I think she would have noted them in here.
Would she, would she have had an email? Would she, do you think she would have emailed the?
I think she had some email contact with someone, but I'm not absolutely sure who it was.
Before, before December 31st?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, okay.
We wouldn't do anything before December 31st, because we just thought it was paid. And so when it, then it got, you know, it got into January, and, and we hadn't gotten a receipt. And I know she contacted somebody, emailed, emailed somebody about all that. I'm pretty sure she did that. Because I know she had, she had some kind of communication with somebody. So I can, I wish she was here, but she's not. But I can, she's pretty good at bringing up her emails.
It really is. We would need the, the proof that she had some kind of communication before December 31st.
Well, but why, but why before December 31st? I don't understand that.
Because after, after midnight of December 31st, it was late.
Right, but, but why would you have communication with someone before it's late? I mean, it's, you know, I mean, I've never done that, ever. I mean, I pay my taxes my own, and I just assume that they've been received, and, and then, you know, you receive, because December 14th was the date that the check was written. So, I mean, I don't, I don't push it too hard, but I don't pay too quick either. And so, you know, with the way everything else was going, we never even thought that it wouldn't have gotten to the office by the 31st. And so if she, if she communicated with anybody, it would be after the 31st, because that's when we realized that we didn't get our tax receipt yet, you know? So I, I know that she doesn't have an email before the 31st.
Unfortunately, the law in Missouri puts the burden on the taxpayer to pay their taxes before the 31st, even if they act in good faith. And I don't think anyone is suggesting that didn't happen here. Because the reality also is, in a county like Clay, I bet we have over 100,000 individual payments coming in, and parcels, and such, with 250,000 people. Statistically, some will get lost. And, you know, we all know that with the post office. There's simply no, no doubt of it. Statistically, we know that will happen. The law, I would suggest, puts, continues to put the burden on the taxpayer to make sure they're in fact paid. You know, right or wrong, I think that's what Missouri law would suggest.
Okay.
Did you, did you care to offer an amendment, Commissioner Thompson?
I, I think the only choice we have left is, is to deny the request for waiver of fees.
Okay. The question on the floor right now is to approve of the waiver. So the vote, if we go to a vote on the issue as it is now, that would have to be a no vote to deny. Is that correct, Mr. Counselor?
So either, I think we either need to, yes, so I think we either need to vote on the amendment, or on the motion as presented, or that motion gets withdrawn, right?
Right, what I'm saying is, because right now, it is proposed that we approve, to deny it would mean that a no vote would be required. A yes vote would approve, so.
A yes vote would approve the request for waiver. So I like to think that a yes vote on the current motion would be in favor of the taxpayer.
That's right.
It's probably the simplest way for me to think about it.
Yeah, because of the way the Commissioner Thompson put it, it struck me that there might be some confusion, so I wanted to state that as clearly as possible. The other alternative would be to withdraw and make a proposal that be denied, and then that would require a yes vote. But right now, what's in front of us is the approval of 2021-88 for the approval of the waiver.
That's how I read it, that's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure we are all starting from the same spot, since we kind of got pretty far down the road on some things. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Commissioner Carpenter, it is your motion, so you are free to close.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just to clarify with County Counsel, so do we need to withdraw and reintroduce it as a denial, and then do it that way? Or will this suffice?
So if we, either we vote on the, on the pending motion, or it gets withdrawn. If the pending motion is, for approval, becomes a vote of no, no, then it's done. If it becomes a vote of yes, yes, it's done. If it's a vote of yes and no, then you're up to bat.
Yes, presiding, yeah.
Or it could be withdrawn, and then a substitute motion could be made, checking the deny box, and then we go through that process.
Okay, thanks. So to Ms. Summers, you know, just, so here's what my understanding of the state statute, state law is, is that there has to be a finding of a county error. And what happened last week is, county, the county Collector, with whom your company communicated, stated that it is her office's contention that they did not make an error. That they are, that it was the county Collector's Office, that it's her contention, this is Ms. McAvoy, that they did not make an error. And so we, as a commission, have to follow state law, of course, as everyone does. My understanding from state law, having read it and from discussing with our County Counselor, is that without a finding of an error on the part of the county, and so, for example, the county Collector's Office could theoretically acknowledge that they made an error, but they're not doing that. They're saying they did not. And so it is my understanding that under the law, we are not allowed to repay the penalty and fee without a finding of an error on behalf of the county Collector's Office. So while I'm sure you paid the bill, you, it sounds like you've done so for over a decade, you've got documentation with the check and the date and all that. And I'm sorry that USPS presumably didn't deliver the check. I think it's our feeling as a commission that we may not have the ability, under the law, to refund your money. And so I just wanted to explain my perspective on it before I close on the motion. And I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
No.
Commissioner Thompson?
No.
Okay, issue, the waiver is denied. That brings us to the end.
I think we probably need to do, I think we need to be, there needs to be a motion to deny, as opposed to reject the approval. And right now, what's that?
That's what I meant to ask before. I thought that's the fact.
Yeah, so I think the first motion is, yes, so that's what I think, so now, now a new, so the first motion was denied, now the second motion needs to be a denial.
So what you're saying, there has to be, there's no odd way to put it, but an affirmative action to deny?
Yes.
Is what you're saying is required?
Yes, I apologize if I wasn't.
Yeah, I did. That's kind of where I was fuzzy also. I'm glad we finally got to the clarification on this. So is there a motion to, on 2021-88 for denial of the waiver?
I will make the motion on 2021-20, 88, sorry, to deny the request for waiver of fees.
Motion made for the denial of the waiver in 2021-88, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Very well. The waiver has been denied. That brings us to the end of our regular session. I'm sorry, I seem to have misplaced my agenda in the shuffle here. There we are. That brings us to comments on non-agenda items. Are there any comments from the public on any items that did not appear on today's agenda? Seeing none. Any office holders care to make any comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none. But any agency comments on, do any agencies have comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none. That concludes the comments on non-agenda items. County Administrator, does the County Administrator have any comments to make at this time?
None.
Thank you. That brings us to County Commissioner comments. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this point?
No, thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Carpenter, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
I also have no comments at this time. That brings us to approval of the minutes. We have one item, March 24, 2021, 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes of the, of that meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Motion has been made for the approval of the minutes of the March 24, 2021, 6:00 p.m. meeting, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Brings us to written reports. Are there any written reports to be submitted to the commission at this time?
Not from our office, no.
Okay, I see no other written reports that are being indicated. Executive sessions, we have none. That brings us to recess and adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
John or Megan? John? John, you'll sign these. They're all, they're vetoed.
I know. I'll see those tomorrow.
So they voted no the first time on John's motion?
Right.
So do I do no? I should have asked Kevin. So do I do approves and then no and no?
I don't know how he said that.
Or do I do denies? Yes, and he is.
I don't know. I know, but I didn't understand why there was two votes.